Well, welcome everyone. Just a reminder to the board members that when you speak, you need to push your button so that the camera can follow you. And then when you're done, push it again so it can unfollow you. I think is the verbiage that we're after there. Before we move to the open forum, I have a statement that I'd like to mostly say, partly read. I wrote some things down, so I don't forget some things. First of all, again, welcome. I wanted to thank the board members for the time we had this past week. We all met individually, and I valued those conversations that we had. And I do appreciate your time and the confidence that you placed in me during those conversations. That meant a lot to me, so that we are on the same page, so that we can move forward. And I want to make some comments that apply to everyone, including myself. But first, I'd like to make a comment directed just to Linda. When you nominated someone else, me, for the board chair, you effectively resigned from a public office and a public meeting. And that is hard to do. And so I know as we discussed, you did it because you thought it was the best thing for the students of the district and for the rest of us. And so I think that takes character to do that in a public manner. And I applaud you for that. So now, again, everything else I say applies to me as well. I want these meetings to be open. I want a free flow of information. But the meetings that I run, I expect a certain level of professional decorum. We're all public officials, all duly elected. And so this side of the table, any of our guests, I have a certain level of decorum that I expect. And should that fail, we will move on to other options. I think that this board needs to be open, completely open, for criticism that is both fair and unfair, that's both deserved and undeserved, that creates a free flow of information so that we have an understanding of what the constituents want for our students. However, I do not think that that criticism should become personal. And that's where I would start to draw a very definitive line and vigorously defend anyone that's an employee of the district or school board member, or a member of the community that is subject to a personal attack about an issue that the board is discussing. And I know from our conversations that, on a personal level, we are not all best friends. I'll just say it that way. But I do respect each of the offices that you were elected to. And I would just simply ask that you respect the offices that all of us were elected to and carry ourselves in that manner, so that we can show people that we can get the business done of educating our students. And then part of that is I'd like to start talking about agenda building. Policy, Minnesota School Board Association, rules of agenda building are really given to the superintendent with the board chair input. And so Dr. Funk and I are going to be meeting, and we'll publish the date and times very soon, the Thursday before every scheduled board meeting. So if someone, if anybody has an agenda item that they would like on the upcoming agenda, if they could let us know about it Monday or Tuesday, so we could evaluate it, get any facts or data that we know, you are then welcome to come to that meeting. That is an open meeting to attend if you have an agenda item that we've been able to vet through with you. Now, as the board members know, only two board members can show up, or it becomes an open meeting violation. I do have a little concern about the equity of that for, like, you know, some of us have jobs that you can't come. I imagine it'll be Thursday afternoon. So I do worry a little bit about equity among the board members, who can make that. So if that becomes an issue, you have to let me know. But I want it to be an open forum, so that we can build the agenda. I don't think, I think we should try not to have surprise agenda items of any kind at any time. We should know our business well enough that that doesn't need to happen unless there's an emergency. Which also gets to decorum at meetings. I think, I don't like to be, the meetings that I run, committees that I chair, I don't like to be stumped. I don't like when people ask me questions that they could have asked me offline, especially about facts. I think it's unfair for any of us to ask any of the other of us, or from the public, or vice versa, a factual question that we could have looked up and known the exact answer two or three days prior. Now, once we know that fact, if it brings on questions, then we want to be open to all of those questions. So I just implore us to try to follow that. We're also elected officials. It's a democracy. We are elected to represent our constituents, some of whom have voices and some of whom who do not. And I think we always need to remember that. We represent everybody. Ultimately, you vote on a subject based on your own assimilation of the facts and the feelings and the people you've talked to, but we represent everyone. And so right now, I cannot think of a topic item that I think we would push back to the public to vote on. Our job is to vote on the items. Our job is to be open to as much input as we can, but we are not set up, and I think it's improper, to try to determine certain levels of issues that face us that we think we want the public to vote on. I think that is morass that we will never get out of. So we are going to be doing the voting on the issues that come to the school board. And then lastly, in my other job, our core value is the needs of the patient come first. And so when we have heated discussions, and we can't agree on something, we just say to ourselves, the needs of the patient come first. That trumps my professional needs, that trumps my calendar, that trumps anybody else's personal issues, what's best for the patient. So I would like us to start thinking that the needs of the students come first. And if we get caught in a debate and we can't come to agreement, that's where our focus should be, is on the students of the district. And I think if we follow that, we can move forward and do the work that we need to do, which is provide the best education for all of our students. And so I'm excited to move forward. We're going to have some interesting topics come up. And I think, I think based on our individual conversations, we have a group that can get the work done in the proper manner. And with that, I'd like to start the meeting, unless you have questions or comments about that. No? Okay. Is there anybody that would like to speak to the board during the open forum? Is there anybody that would like to speak to the board? I always ask that three times, so, in case anybody would like to speak to the board. All right? If not, we'll move on. We need a motion to approve today's agenda.
Bill, move.
Okay, Bill, second?
Second.
Julie? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign? Good. Consent items, we'll move those all as an item unless somebody would like to remove one from the agenda. So I need a motion to approve the consent items. There a second? Dave, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign? Okay. Item six, reports, 6.1, Dr. Funk.
The, before you pop up my PowerPoint, first thing I'm going to talk about tonight is safe welcoming healthy schools. And I don't think everybody's seen this yet. The Chamber has a project that they've got going on for different entities within town to provide a video to kind of highlight the organization. So we're a partner in this project, and we've had a video that was created in September for the school district. So let's play that right now. Go ahead and click on that, Ashley.
Welcome to Albert Lee Schools. Building bright futures in stronger communities. This school year, show off your stripes as part of the Tiger team. Through diverse educational support and challenge our students to think and succeed. Youth have the chance to develop and grow through hands-on learning. From early learning to transitioning to high school through our unique Link Crew program, we invest in our students 100 percent. Students can become team players at school and within the community by getting involved in an extensive variety of sports, extracurricular activities, and community service projects. You can find our students on stage, down the field, or as active community members, building character and discovering their strengths. The sky is the limit when it comes to what we know our students can achieve. The Tigers of Albert Lee Schools. Think, achieve, and care.
Chris Chalmers and some of the individuals in the community had kind of took the lead on putting that together with the company. But when we have prospective people coming and visiting the community, I think it's good to have a positive image out there like that.
Did you say the Chamber's putting that thing together?
It's on, Chamber's got different businesses in town, and it links to the Chamber website, or you can link from the Chamber website to that video.
Because I know when I moved to town, the Chamber, I think it was, presented me with a video from the whole town, and it was awesome. So that was, and that was, you know, 12, 13 years ago. So this is an awesome thing. I think this is really great to have this part of that. Thanks.
Next, I want to talk about, and it's going to be, you'll see three videos actually tonight that I'm going to show you. Yesterday, we had Jody Farr. She's an expert on poverty, and she met with our high school staff to discuss perceptions. And, you know, people have different perceptions of people throughout society based upon gender, race, economic status. And I think, I've talked to a number, I sat in for about an hour and a half, I sat in on a presentation, and I've talked to a number of high school staff, and they were very impressed with the presentation. It was based more on, this is reality. It wasn't, you're treating people poorly, it's, this is what life is kind of about. As part of it, she showed a video, and I grabbed the video off of YouTube today, and it really drives home for me, it drove home, how we can treat people differently just based on our perception of who they are. And I'm going to have Ashley show this in a second, but what got me thinking about it is, if we have students who people have perceptions of, are they being treated differently in the classroom, just because of, you know, what our perception is of them? And she even went so far as to say it's because of their last name, which we've all heard in smaller towns. So it was pretty interesting. But what you're going to see now is a video that a group put together called "The Homeless Man Experiment." And we'll show you what happens to an individual who's a homeless man when he tries panhandling in a few different ways.
My name's Sandy Shook. I'm a homeless person. I live here in the Austin area. This is Joseph Castell. I've known Joseph a couple of months. And we got this idea for a video in which I would go around as myself and panhandle money, and then we'd go back into the same areas, asking the same questions, but with me in a business suit. And I hope you enjoy this video and how things-
Yeah, I want to give a special thanks for Sandy for being a part of this. This video would not be possible at all if Sandy didn't agree to do this. This is a really cool experiment we came up with, and I hope you guys learned something from it, because I definitely did enjoy it. Special thanks for Sandy. Thank you.
All right, let's get in. How's it going, guys?
It's good, it's good.
Good to see you.
How do you look?
Wow.
How do you feel? Fresh? Let's do it.
Excuse me, but I need 50 cents for a bus ticket. I'm just a little bit short. I get my 50 cents, I get to go. Kind of in a big hurry. Well, thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Well, thank you. $2. Thank you so much. Well, thank you. Thank you so much. I'm about a dollar short from a Subway sandwich.
I think I got a dollar.
It's embarrassing to have to ask. Well, thank you so much.
$5. I asked for 25 cents for a cup of coffee, and he said, it's too hot today for a cup of coffee. You reached in and you pulled out a five.
Quarter short for a cup of coffee. Could you help me?
Quarter?
Well, that's okay. That's okay. You know what? I actually have a quarter, come to think of it. I'm good. I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Are you homeless?
I'm in Jersey, right now.
That's really heartwarming that you're going to give him a quarter.
Oh, really?
Let me help you out really quick.
Thank you.
Take it, man.
Thank you.
No problem.
I'm short by about 50 cents for a cup of coffee. I really need a cup of coffee. Yeah, my name's Sandy. I need about 50 cents for a bus ticket.
I'm sorry.
I need about 50 cents for a bus ticket. I'm just a dollar short from a Subway sandwich. I got a-
I'm sorry, boss.
No. No, I didn't even say anything.
Oh, kiss. Okay.
So kind of powerful about how perceptions can be changed just by appearance. So I thought, she did a great job yesterday. All right, oh, I got the, Southwest Middle School, I'm going to have Steve Kobach come here sometime in the next month or two. And they've implemented a new program during the day that they're calling Tiger Plus. They have advisories that meet during the day, but what they're doing is they're refocusing some of these advisories. And kids who need extra help twice a week are now receiving interventions for 30 minutes. And kids will also be receiving enrichments who are already mastering the material. But, and Steve and Mary and crew have been working on that for a few months, and this has really bubbled up from his staff. And so we're not having any more time during the school day, but it's just reshifting some of the advisory time. And like I said, he'll be coming and talking to you, but his staff's pretty fired up about it. And then Chris Chalmers had a meeting last week. As you're aware, we didn't get the large grant we were trying to get from the federal government through Race to the Top. But Chris still thought, you know what, we still have to do something collaboratively with our early childhood programming. So he got a number of providers together on an evening last week, and they looked at more collaboration and different things that we can do to increase our early childhood preparedness for kindergarten. And then, as I've heard, I heard from at least one board member, I was made aware of it about on Facebook, we had an issue with high school heat a few weeks ago after the break. Some of you may recall, the geothermal fields that we use, were not all being used. And Steve Anderson discovered that a few years ago, and a couple of years back. So now we've tapped into all of them, so now things should be operating more efficiently. But the ones we tapped into that hadn't been used for a while were clogged with gravel and such, because they hadn't been used. So the filters were getting clogged, and we had at least four rooms at the high school impacted with temperatures in the high 50s, low 60s. I checked with Mark today. The issue appears to have been resolved. We don't have any cool rooms at the high school at this point. So I want to touch base on that. Subject to your questions? Okay, thank you.
The Tiger Plus, we're going to be hearing more about that, but I'm just wondering, how is that, how does that work with interventions? Who gives interventions? Do they stay in their class and do it there? Is it more focused than that?
Mary, you have a comment on that?
They work in teams, so I got a high student at the area that they need extra support in. And so during that 20, 30 minute window, kids are kind of assigned to different teachers. Right now, it's pretty much intervention days with a spot for kids that are kind of, that are caught up where they can do some leisure reading and some different things like that. August or April, and add inter-enrichment, it's just maybe later on in the next week. It's specific interventions that they need in those four areas.
Thank you.
Do we know, like, if that comment's going to be recorded? Or how does that work? Is there, does that-
At the microphone.
Okay. I think if we just keep that in mind, if someone wants to come back and hear Mary's response, it might sound like the Peanuts school teacher, so.
The interventions are determined based upon student need by, and the students are all in core teams of, core groups of teachers who teach the core areas. So if there's a need for intervention, the teachers meet, okay, if Johnny is struggling in this area, all right, then we're going to assign you to this teacher for this period of time. So that'll, but thanks for reminding me of that.
Seeing no student board members tonight, any other board members have anything to report? I'd like to see at least everybody at this table, if not everybody in this room, be a judge at the science fair, which is February 21st, I believe. It's in the morning, it takes about two and a half hours, go in groups of three. Don't have to have any science background. In fact, sometimes I think it's better if you don't. So we'll get you more information in the signup sheet next meeting, then we can determine who's going to be on the team, so. Anything else? Anybody? Okay, moving on to 9.1, review of the MSBA Leadership Conference, Dr. Funk.
Couple pretty interesting takeaways from the conference. The first one, we've heard about this issue of, or a number of us have, who've been in education for a while, old facilities bonding. And, but by that, we talk about, and it's alternative ways to raise revenue to improve your facilities. So there's 25 districts in the state of Minnesota, most of them the largest districts, can actually go out and levy taxpayers to improve their facilities without the community voting on it. There are other 300 and some districts in the state, if we want to fix something that's broken, like if we need more money for roofing or something and it's not in our budget, we'd have to actually go to the taxpayers and levy for it. So there's a bill in front of the legislature that balances this out, so that by the power of the board, the board could say, we want to increase our levy to update our facilities. So I'm going to show you, and Dave, you've got to see this already, a video that our, C, the group we belong to, to try to get equity at the legislature, that C has put together, dealing with the facilities issue that outstate districts are dealing with. So go ahead and click on the link, Ashley.
Superintendent Jenny and Superintendent Jimmy have built great schools.
Look at what my school is.
They both have dedicated teachers and supportive parents.
I think I need new science and technology labs.
So do we.
Jimmy's and Jenny's school district are about the same size, and not far away from each other, but there's one big difference. Jenny's district is eligible to receive school facilities funding, and Jimmy's district is not.
I think I need a new roof.
I just got mine.
Hey, where'd you get that?
Jimmy has just discovered that not all school districts in Minnesota are treated equally. The state allows some school districts, like Jenny's, to access school facilities levy funds for maintenance and upgrades. Other schools like Jimmy's have to use their general fund money, and sometimes there just isn't enough.
I think I'll have to wait until next year for mine.
Unfortunately, when it comes to repairs, waiting isn't always the best answer. So school districts like Jimmy's that aren't eligible for school facilities funding must ask the voters for additional funding to make repairs and upgrades. They must run levy campaigns to get maintenance and upgrades funding. Many times, these levy campaigns delay or prevent needed projects until emergencies arise and costs skyrocket.
Now I have to pay for the roof and the flooding.
Sadly, when Jimmy's school district has repairs to make, he has to pay for them out of his general fund. That means that money that otherwise would be paying for teachers and books gets diverted to pay for repairs. And in the end, students in many school districts are attending school in substandard learning environments.
We just put in a new secure entry.
Supporting school facilities legislation would allow all Minnesota school districts to keep ahead of the maintenance and repairs. Ask the governor and your state legislators to support school facilities legislation, because all students deserve a safe, healthy 21st century classroom, regardless of where they live in Minnesota.
So I attended a session on this, because there's a facilities task force that the Department of Education put together, and I'll show you, go ahead and, oh, I got the So here's the impact on Albert Lee, okay? There's a bill in front of the legislature that would increase revenue up to, I think it's $300 per student initially, then it goes to 500, and then I think the cap actually goes away. So currently, we receive from the state about $228,000 in deferred maintenance revenue for our school district on an annual basis. If this bill were to pass, you as a board could levy up to eventually $500 per student, which would increase it to 1.7 million on an annual basis. 37% of that would be state aid. So potentially, as a school board down the road, you could increase your deferred maintenance revenue from 228,000 and increase it by 1.5 million. What the impact on the local voters would be, would be an increase of 884,000 to the local levy. It would be empowering boards to make that decision without having to go to the voters. So there's some controversy over this in the legislature, and the two sides of the issue are, they want to make it an equity of fairness issue. These 25 districts have been getting this for a long time. And, okay, now let's leave him the playing field. The other side of the coin is, well, these 25 districts are getting this, let's just take it away from them, so nobody gets it. But I don't think that's going to happen, because those are the 25 of the largest districts in the state of Minnesota, and they have considerable clout. So this is a hot-button issue, or potentially could be. I actually think there was an article in the Albert Lee Tribune that they, that they'd ran in the metro, that was run in the metro earlier this weekend, that I saw. So that's what the impact would be at a $500 per student level for Albert Lee. Questions on that?
So the current, it's just based on number of students? It's just 25 big districts?
It's 25 big districts. There might be a couple other ones because of some legislative clout they were able to get on that list, that maybe aren't the biggest. But the vast majority of them are the largest districts. So I had, I went to the meeting, and Ayler's ran these numbers for me yesterday to show the impact on Albert Lee. Questions on that? So it's a potential opportunity for us if we needed to, down the road, to dip into, if the bill was passed. The other thing I went to was something called SLEDs, and Jeff Hilversen out there is very familiar with SLEDs. It's a statewide longitudinal educational data system, and it really takes a look at what happens to our graduates when they leave Albert Lee High School. So Ashley, go ahead and click on the link, and then go over to, yep, enrollment, and find Albert Lee Public Schools, or Albert Lee Area Schools. Yep, there you go. Okay, I don't know if we can blow this up at all or not. All right, so up there, you can see that, this is 2013 data, and it's just kind of interesting for the board to see. And actually, I'll put a link on this to my blog, so anybody in the community can go on and see this as well. So the students of ours who graduated from- So the students of ours who graduated from, from high school in 2013, in the fall of 2013, 67% of them went on, of the graduates, went on to some sort of college institution. They had post-secondary training. Could be two-year, it could be certificate, could be four-year, okay? So compared to the state, 69% of graduates in the state go on to, uh, some sort of, uh, post-secondary education. Go ahead and click on where students go to college, Ashley. So of our students who graduated, 20% of them in 2013 went on to a Minnesota public four-year. 38% went on to Minnesota public two-year. 12% went on to four-year private, and 30% of our students went outside the state of Minnesota. Okay, scroll down. I think this next one is pretty interesting. Of the colleges we attended, the vast majority of our students who graduated went to Riverland. Next was Mankato State, and then the U. Okay, scroll back up. Go to completing college, and then go scroll up, Ashley, to, um, yep, right there. Go to 2008. Click Done. All right, so this shows persistence, okay? So how many of our students who went on to college, um, enrolled in college in their second year? 86% did, statewide, 86%. How many of our students persisted on to their third year? 70% in Albert Lee, 73% in the state. And how many of them went on to their fourth year? 56% of our students, um, went on to their fourth year. Go ahead and click on degree completion. Okay, of the students who attended college after school, 45% had a certificate diploma or higher, 42% had an associate's degree or higher, and 27% of the class of 2008 earned a college degree, or a baccalaureate four-year degree. And then go on, time to college completion. You can see that 33% of our students, um, completed it in four years. I think those of who... This is of those who graduated. And 45% of them have completed it in up to six years. So it's just some interesting data on where our kids go, how long it takes them to get to college, and you can see how we compare to the state averages on that. And I'll send this out to the board so you guys can go in and take a look at it as well. They're trying to dig to the point where they can actually look at where you go to college, and then when you graduate from college, um, what, um, what colleges, if you learn accounting at a college, okay, what's the, uh, what's the job market placement for certain schools on, based upon certain positions? Go ahead and scroll up, Ashley. We'll look at one other thing on here, and you've seen this data before, but click on developmental education. Okay, um, percent of high school graduates enrolled in developmental education classes. All right, in 2013, 25% of our kids needed developmental education, and statewide, 24%. You see the number of developmental credits were needed. And what we mean by developmental credits is this: if you're gonna go to college and you wanna enroll in English 101, okay? You're given a test by the school, and if they don't think you have the skills necessary to enroll in English 101, you have to take developmental courses before they allow you to take it. Go ahead and click on the developmental education trends. And again, you saw this in November at another presentation I had, but here's Albert Lee student percentages who need developmental education compared to the statewide who need it. So we're pretty comparable to the state, year in and year out. Some years we're under, some years we're over. Scroll back just up, just a little higher, Ashley. Okay, the thing that's, I think, important for parents to note here is average number of developmental credits necessary, you know, 4.87 from the class of 2013. So those are five credits that families are paying that their kids aren't getting credit for. So we can do better at this, and in February, Mr. Grossklaus is gonna come and talk to you about some of the things that the high school's planning for next year. But I thought this, uh, this is some interesting information that, uh, was shared with me at MSBA, and I figured I'd share with the board. Questions?
I think that piece of data is obviously something we'd wanna work on, but of all the others, is there something in there that says, "Oh, we oughta be doing something different for our students here"? I guess my question is, a lot of them go to Riverland, but as we have our pathways to success, that's not, I mean, that's not a negative thing for the students that wanna go to Riverland, but like, if, I guess I wanna know if there's students that tried to get in a four-year, I mean, you know, so I guess the question is, what in there should we know?
I think that, I think the biggest piece of information in all this data, and it ties into our community as well, is we have 27% of our students, at least in 2008, and I think if you go back and look, it'd be pretty consistent over time, who get a four-year degree. And yet, if you were to look at and talk to parents at Albert Lee High School, well, that's what my son or daughter's gonna be. They're gonna go out and they're gonna get a four-year degree. And so part of, I think, the whole pathways piece is, okay, that we have different pathways for our students that will lead to success, that doesn't necessarily mean you have to get a four-year degree. And I think just educating the public that there are some great, great jobs that kids make a lot of, individuals make a lot of money that they don't necessarily need a four-year degree for. So that was a thing that really stuck out for me, um, from reviewing the data.
Other questions, comments? And I know we didn't ask anybody else to prepare anything, but since we're talking about the MSBA, is there anybody that has a wow, I learned this type of thing, or we can bring reports back next time? Any... We all went to different types of things.
I don't know that I had any wow moments necessarily. Good, like legislative updates, data practices, updates. I thought the keynote speaker, uh, the very first day was fantastic, and as someone who was raised in a home with poverty, and that, I just think spoke loudly to all of us. I think he was, he had very moving stories and great energy about how to connect with kids, and I thought that was terrific. But good sessions, it was another good conference.
Else?
I, I attended some interesting sessions. One was on the open meeting law. Another was on bullying. I picked up an extra pamphlet from that one, if anybody wants to know more about that. I attended the board voting and parliamentary procedures session. And the "You can't punish me because I was not at school when I misbehaved" was interesting for students and employees of, about off-campus behavior. I also attended some roundtables, and one of them, well, several of them were really interesting. One of them was Hayfield High School Social Media Guidelines for Student Participants, and I don't know if we have any social media guidelines currently in our co-curricular handbook, so it's just something that I thought was interesting. They actually had an issue with one of their sports teams, and I think it was Facebook. Somebody posted a negative, something negative about some of the team players, and then other people jumped on, including parents. And so they looked for a guideline and only found a couple in the state, in the country that had them. So they came up with this one, and both the student and the parent must sign it in order for the student to be a part of co-curricular activities. So I thought that might be something interesting to look at if we haven't looked at it yet. One of the booths I stopped by was AmeriCorps, and I remember years ago, I was an AmeriCorps volunteer, and I didn't know, we don't have that now. I didn't know if that was a something, or I'm not sure if we have it now. I don't know if that's something that we can get again, or if that's kinda passed for us, and, and we don't need to have that information right now. I can, I can ask that in an email, too, but that was a question that I had. I talked to a few people about Avid, um, speaking my language about connecting with kids and what means a lot to them. One interesting thing I went to, too, was a roundtable on public engagement, and the presenter was from the National School Board Association, and they actually have a toolkit on their, um, website, which had a lot of interesting ways to keep the public engaged with us. Since we're kind of riding a wave, I'd love to see that continuing to a public engagement, whether it's, um, using Twitter or, you know, billboards handcrafted around town. Lots of good ideas were in that one, so... Oh, and the, the, both of the keynote speakers I really enjoyed, and, um, the one that we had the last day brought out some really interesting points in what's important for kids, such as, um, you know, challenging them in different aspects of their life and, and the community aspect of it, and, and having them, having something that they actually work for and are invested in and can maintain, kinda brings out a purpose in life, and that, that really spoke to me. And then another comment he made, he was actually the National Teacher of the Year, I don't know if it was last year or another year, but, um, another comment he made was, "Many successful classrooms are student-driven, and many successful districts are teacher-driven." So that is something I'd like to maybe explore, if there's interest in that, to find out how we can, uh, kinda maybe move in that direction for success.
Great, thanks for all that. Anybody else, or next time, maybe if you... Dave?
There we go. Just a quick comment, since I got to do Phase 1 and 2, in addition to everything else, I guess. It was very enlightening. Thanks to Lyndon and Mike for being there to see me through the process of those first two days, but just everything from, again, you know, the open meeting law as a public official, and, um, all the way through school finance. I called it school law, just some of the do's and don'ts, things that we see, things that we shouldn't see, was very interesting. Lot of, lot of insights. You could, you could kinda say overwhelming at some point. It wasn't totally overwhelming because there's background there, but it was very interesting and good to see all the, the new, I don't know, was there 400 new school board members maybe in the state, something on that? So it was, uh, it was very interesting, but again, thanks for you guys to lead me through, make sure you didn't get lost. So is it? Thanks.
All right, anybody else? Thanks, Dave.
No, I'll bring you to the next meeting.
Great, okay.
Little thing. Um, yeah, it was, you know, speaking about the Phase 1 and Phase 2, I think it was the fourth time I've been to Phase 1 and Phase 2, which I love. It's just, it's such a great time to just sit back and listen again and just hear the same things over again. And I would encourage school members who've been on the board, if you haven't been to it lately, you know, go next year if you have the opportunity, 'cause I'm sure we would allow them to go. I mean, so, um, it's, it's a great refresher, so... One of the things that I went to, too, was, you know, you were talking about the great two-year degrees in the community. Fergus Falls has a new, it's called Modern Manufacturing Learning Lab, that took a 1970's old shop. They're raising $350,000 to turn it into a new, with, with a business in town, turn it into a modern manufacturing lab. Now, they haven't got it going yet. That was my disappointment, 'cause I wanted to see how it was going yet, but I think next year they'll have the classes going. But with a STEM program and whatnot, it was really very quite interesting. I'd like to find out how that works in their communities, so... And again, partnering with an industry in town and having, you know, finding out what they need and tailoring the kids' education to that, so that was really good. Another thing I did go to, too, was in engaging the community and how to keep community involved and, and going to, to, to the community. Instead of having the community come to us, they talked about having meetings in apartment buildings and just different things like that. So it was really, that was a very good one. That was in Robinsdale, larger district, very different than Albert Lee, but it was good to hear, too, so, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. All right, item 9.2, establish the school board meeting time, start time for 5:30 PM. So I would entertain a motion for that.
I'll move approval.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, and now a discussion.
Um, I've heard from the community that they would appreciate a later start time for people that are getting off work and needing to get here, and I know it's pushing it to kind of over the dinnertime, but at least it's keeping it out of evening, so it might be a step in the right direction.
And just a question, when was it we were thinking about implementing this? Was it July? Or, I forget what we had talked about. Have we talked about a time?
No. For, for July, we did.
Okay.
But we're really talking about between now and July, or continuing July.
The concern I have with it is, again, we kinda talked about it, and it's keeping the district employees here, and I know, you know, you can rearrange the agenda and whatnot, but they've been here since probably 7 o'clock in the morning, so that gets to be a long day for them. One of the other things I thought about after was band concerts and choir concerts and stuff like that. If you start at 5:30, that's really pushing into those, and so we're having to hurry up and finish up our meetings before, 'cause those are usually on Monday nights, so that was my kinda concern with that. So just cognizant of the employees' time.
Yeah, I think those are, I think those are great thoughts, 'cause, you know, especially for some of the closed sessions, which I believe... I was trying to think through a way to do the closed sessions at the beginning of the meeting, because that requires the district employees, but we either have to set a time limit for the closed meetings, which is problematic, or not set a time limit, and then the public doesn't know when we're actually gonna start. And so I think the closed sessions would have to stay at the end. So that is my concern, too, is, um, the district employees that have to hang around and then get pushed into the timing of some of the night events. I think they're both valid points.
Years ago, I know that we had, I think we had our workshop at 5:00 and then our meeting at 7:00, so I don't know how the employees handled it then. I don't know if it could be kind of the same issue, but it does get to be a long day.
Julie?
I, you know, I definitely see both sides of, um, so I'm torn in, I see the valid points of having it a little later for community members to come. I don't know if in planning ahead for agenda, the making of development of the agenda, if on those nights where we know ahead of time that there would be a band concert or choir concert, that that could be a night where shorter agenda is built to possibly alleviate that issue. The staffing issue, yeah, I'm sensitive to that, too. Folks are gone all day, and, and then into the evening away from families and home. So that, that's a tough one. I don't know. I think there's no easy answer.
Dave?
Yeah, I definitely like the opportunity for the community to become more a part of it a little later on, but in addition to the music concerts, the sporting events, the younger kids will start at 6 o'clock, or some even go at 4:30, if I remember in the good old days. But that would be my only concern. Now, that's not every time, and that's more tended toward your, your winter sports, but in the spring, we get into that, too.
Good. Bill?
You know, I, I don't have a problem looking at it. I, you know, if we're gonna go this way, what I would recommend is that, you know, within three months to six months, we revisit it and just see whether or not we're getting increased, uh, community involvement at the meetings. You know, I like the idea of being able to, you know, cater to the community. Um, you know, referring back to your comments earlier, we've all had kids that have been in special or extracurricular, whether it be fine arts or sports, so it's, it's a sacrifice as a board member that you're gonna have to make, that you may end up missing your kid in one of those events, so, um, you know, if this is gonna increase, uh, community involvement, you know, I'm willing to give it a try. But I'd like to revisit it in three months or six months, whatever is appropriate.
Okay. And the other thought I had was, do we, should, we should be able to know agenda topics that will, uh, encourage public participation and attendance, and then start those particular meetings later? And I think over the years, I've... And I think over the years, I've somewhat learned that we know when those are, and we also know the many meetings we've been to where it's just the seven of us. But like what Bill said, too, it will push somebody to miss one of their own child's activities, and I...
I remember when I joined the board, Marjorie Thorne told me that my family comes first, even before the school board.
What? No. So Dr. Funk, I'd appreciate your opinion.
What I would suggest is we could have Ashley go back for the last five years and do an average of how many people have been in a meeting. And I concur with your comments that I think we've had about, you know, average about maybe five people at a meeting, okay? With the exception of this past six months or so where the calendar topic has really become front and center. As you can see, there's no calendar on the agenda tonight, and look at the attendance in the meeting tonight. So I think that we are here to serve the board. I have three kids in the district. Yeah, do I have band concerts at seven o'clock? Do I have athletic events? Yes, I do. But we're here to serve you, so whatever you decide is, you know, what we, of course, will support. But we have not had large community attendance in my five and a half years here in the district, and I don't think by moving the meeting a half hour, we're going to see a significant increase in our attendance.
And I'm going to ask the people that did show up tonight, would a half hour make a difference to you? Or if it was an important topic, you'd come a half hour earlier? You know, weighing that versus Ashley and Jim and Lori Vols and teachers that have to stay into the night? Anybody want to make a comment?
I think it's the issues, not the time. I think that there's going to be issues that the community is going to want to avoid that. They'll be here.
Okay. Well, other comments, Dave?
When did we change it from seven to five? Does anyone remember? Was it?
Probably 2009.
Yeah, and I think sevens, you know, that sounded like it would be a terrible time for all the reasons we just said. So, you know, I think the options are, we could leave it at five until we get to July, where we, you know, maybe in the summer, when there aren't school activities at night, they could be later. They don't all have to be the same time, although that gets confusing for people. We could make meetings later for topics that we know are going to have greater public interest. I'm hoping having an agenda that's more open and people know about it, people who know ahead of time to make plans. But I do, I mean, I do appreciate the people that came tonight, because it was important that they're here, and we want to hear from them. But I also, I really, you know, I'm torn between having district employees added yet to their day. And so I could go either way. I guess I haven't heard a consensus that we can keep discussing. Jill, looks like you have something else, maybe?
Oh, I'm willing to go either way, you know, maybe half an hour won't make that much difference. I'm just wondering, since we've already set next year for 5:30, would now be a good time to try it and see if we want to keep it, or do we want to just back everything up, you know, to five at this point, since we've already set it for next year is just what I'm thinking?
I think it's problematic to try to limit the agenda for, because there's always something, and not just for us, but for committee members. I mean, we just would have no way to know who's going to get conflicted. Should we, could we leave it at five and then revisit it this summer? Talk to more people and get some more input?
Yeah, I'm willing to withdraw my motion. We can take more time to look at that and see if it's worth the half an hour change or not.
Okay, motion withdrawn? Great, good conversation. Thanks for the motion and then for withdrawing, so. Okay, so item 10, pursuant to Minnesota State Statute Section 13D.03, we're going to move into closed session for the purpose of labor negotiations. That requires a motion, a second, and a majority vote. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Jill, second? Discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye? Pose same sign? Okay, motion carries, we're in closed session.